Gaines.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Present.
I call Ms. Present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Witcher, followed by the pledge by Alderman Height?
Gracious Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for watching after us. Thank you for the week that's just passed, for giving us your Son, for having him to redeem us of our sins. Father, guide us as we go about making our decisions and help those individuals who are in the service and their families who wait for them. And I name and pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good for adoption.
Second, motion made and second minutes of the previous meeting be approved and submitted on the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
I've got Communications, 1 through 6. Do I have a blanket motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any Councilmember care to poll one? On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Before I go to the, well, actually, yeah, before I go to, we've got one presentation that isn't scheduled and public hearings, let me go ahead and indicate to the Council that Mr. Zoner, why don't you come on up to the microphone? But let me just go ahead and before Greg gets started, indicate with regard to the authorizing of the relocation of the right-of-way conveyance to energy. I think we all know that has to do with the relocation of the power lines on the Smart House wave property. Just want to make sure that those that may be here that want to testify or interested in testifying on that will have a chance to do that in just a second. However, it's my intent to not call this legislation tonight. I've had discussions today with energy officials about the possibility, I think it was raised by Alderman Witcher, perhaps two council meetings ago, about co-locating our distribution lines on the transmission lines that are now, our distribution lines are now on the north side of Riverfront Drive. And I know that Mr. Drake, who is in the audience, indicated to me earlier that his conversations had been at the field level, I guess, for lack of a better phrase. And I spoke with some energy officials, actually an official today, who is going to check into that. I understand there are some places in our city, perhaps others, that do already have co-distribution lines and transmission lines located on them. And so I am hopeful that we'll get a response back that either indicates some modification that we might be able to do, or permission to co-locate our distribution lines on the to be, hopefully to be relocated, transmission lines. So until I find out the answer to that, it wouldn't be my intention to call that legislation tonight, and for sure not tonight. But I would hope to have an answer back by the next council meeting, and I'll be happy to communicate that as soon as I receive it to the Council, as well as, I know Mr. Lloyd is out in the audience, and I'll be happy to transmit that response to you if you want that information, just as soon as I receive it. And then I would hope we could make a decision shortly after we find out whether or not that option is available. I just wanted to let anybody know that they're certainly welcome. I intend to open that for a public hearing and then recess again until the next council meeting. With that, let me introduce, I think all of you know Mr. Zoner, you know, there was an article about a month ago, three weeks, month ago, in the paper about the possibility of us being considered for a, what I think is an intriguing opportunity. I really never felt that something like this would actually be plausible, but it appears like there may very well be a chance for us to acquire a destroyer. Now, that's a 390.
390 foot.
390 feet. We're going to show you a little bit about where we might be able to put it, you know, and some of the details about it. But I want to emphasize that, you know, no decision's being made. Mr. Zoner will go through some of the facts. Right now, you'll see in the slide that we're about to show, and we'll have this reduced to handouts.
We'll have some handouts.
If you have them, we'll then leave them for the Council, as well as the media. And if you have enough for anybody else, if anybody wants one that doesn't, unable to get one, they're certainly welcome. This vessel has a pretty unique history. Destroyers and submarines are sort of like water and oil, except when they're on the same side.
Yeah, we call them hunter-killers.
That's what we are aware of. And this destroyer was, followed a bit of the same path that our submarine followed. It was sold to the Turkish Navy and recovered about two years, or two to four years earlier than the Razorback came back. It's been in a museum down in Orange County, Texas.
Orange, Texas.
Orange, Texas, the city of Orange. And there had been, over the last several years, the expression of some interest. Orange is not the crossroads of the world in terms of access. It's about 90 miles up the coast from Galveston, as I understand it. And so they weren't really getting a whole lot of, we'll say, frequent activity, and I'm paraphrasing it. And so there had been some conversations about possibly wanting to see if this move could be accomplished, and would we be interested. In fact, not only us, but if I recall, there were several other sites that they were at one point considering, maybe on the Mississippi or.
Lake Charles was their other one that they was looking at real seriously.
So, you know, I really never got very serious about it because, you know, we never really were given any strong indication that we were going to be asked for a home. And so several years ago, when Katrina and Rita, principally Rita, came through, the Orlick was, broke away from her mooring, had a little damage that occurred. And when she was ready to go back to her birth in Orange, they had sold the docks, or at least made arrangements for that real estate to go somewhere else, and that she didn't have a home anymore. And so she's essentially been without a home for the last year.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. The Association has again asked us if we would be interested, and we said we're interested, but we got to know, there's one principal condition, actually two. One is that if we were, we would not be interested in that vessel unless it was delivered free of charge, you know, at our banks. The second thing is obviously that we wouldn't be interested unless the City Council approved it. And so, you know, they are going through some steps right now, none of which are dependent on us receiving it, to determine whether or not they might be able to transport it to us and at their cost. We should know that perhaps within the next several weeks.
I'd say within a couple of weeks.
Within the next, we'll say, certainly within the next two to four weeks. And if it is, then and only then, would we come to the Council. Now, just to give you a little bit of a summary, and then Mr. Zoner's going to kind of give you a bit of an introduction to it, you know, that the modifications, basically, we're looking at realigning and utilizing the mooring facilities that are currently in existence. There would be some modifications. We don't know exactly the extent of those, but you're looking at somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 generally, in terms of possible modifications that we might have to do to accommodate that. What that would then do is it would free up the barges that the Maritime Museum have been using, and we could relocate those for, you know, rental activity, or whatever we might want to do, either someplace else in the downtown area, or, as has been discussed, possibly carrying up to Burns Park, carrying up to Burns Park to be utilized in conjunction with, you know, activities in Burns Park. Then the museum and utilization of the vessel itself, the Orlick, would be of some larger benefit in that, you know, the space, both the variety of different kinds of spaces would be used for the museum, and other activities could be promoted, we'll say. So with that, and we're not asking the Council for anything tonight, because we don't know if we'll have the opportunity, but we wanted to plant the seed and to, you know, let you all know what we know, because literally, you know, it's still, you know, the possibility is still afloat, so to speak. Mr. Zoner?
First, let me apologize to all of you for hearing about this in the newspaper first, but we really didn't have our facts and figures and stuff put together before that came out. You want to swap slides for me? The USS Orlick was built in 1945. It's a World War II Gearing Class destroyer. It is the only Gearing Class destroyer that is still available that has been framed. There are another couple of Gearing Class destroyers that are original to World War II, but the Orlick has been modified, much like the Razorback was, from its World War II configuration, and it was framed in the 60s, so.
What's framed?
It's kind of like, they basically cut off the top deck and rebuild it to support the ASROC, the helicopters, and all the other new weapon systems that came onboard later after the war. She is 390 feet long and 40 foot wide, and she displaces about 2,200 pounds, or 2,200 tons. The Orlick itself is in really good shape, and I brought some pictures. But first, let me go to the next slide, if you would. She did fight in Korea, Vietnam, and she was part of the Gulf War. Now, when she fought for the Gulf War, she was in Turkish control, so she was actually a Turkish ship during the Gulf War, fighting for the NATO crew.
When you say the Gulf War, you're talking about Desert Storm?
Desert Storm, the first one, '92. She was sold to Turkey in the mid-'80s, and she served in the Turkish Navy until 1998, when she was decommissioned. And then a group of destroyer sailors actually brought her back to the United States in 2000. They took her back to Orange, Texas, because that's where she was built. During the war, Orange had a big shipping facility down there, and they made ships. So they took it back down there, and then like Mayor Hayes said, she got damaged in Hurricane Rita, and they didn't have a place to bring her back. They did contact us in 2006 and asked us if we were interested, and we told them that basically, there's no way you're going to get a destroyer up to Arkansas River. So they started searching all the other Gulf cities to find out if there was another place they could move her. Now, unfortunately, most of those cities down there, they can have ships, like Corpus Christi, Galveston, Houston, they already have them. So they was having trouble finding a home for her. And then Lake Charles looked like they wanted her. I guess that fell through. I don't know what happened with that. But then they contacted us again and said, they have talked to their marine engineers, and they think they can get it here. So that's kind of where we are today. The ship is in dry dock right now. They're removing the screws and the sonar dome for it, so they can get a true draft level on the boat itself to see actually how deep she goes. They have been in contact with the Corps of Engineers on water levels and depths and all that stuff up Arkansas, up the Mississippi. They've been in contact with Jan Train for their services and stuff. So they are very actively looking at whether or not they can get this ship here. You go to the next pic. This is a picture, now, I was down in Orange, Texas in 2003, when they had a big reunion down there. And these are photographs that I took at her at the time. So they're about three, they're about five years old, but I do have one recent picture of her in here. So you want to go to the next slide? The outside and the inside of the Orlick is in really good shape. As you can see, this is her bridge section. They have a lot of tin can sailors, what we call tin can sailors, that volunteer, much like our sub-vets do here, to take care of the boat, and that will continue. Next slide. These are some of the rooms within it itself. Like I said, they've started going through and restoring her. She really wasn't in that bad a shape when they got her. So it's kind of like the Razorback, not a whole lot of work to do from her on the top up. Next slide. This is an interesting picture, because this is the five-inch mount, and they completely restored it, and actually shot these five-inch guns in 2005. We have videos of them actually shooting the guns. One of the things we have to look at is the firing pins for these guns belong to the sheriff in Orange County, Orange, Texas. And he's already wanting Captain Davis' name, so he can send him the firing pins.
Can we point those toward Little Rock?
Oh, yeah, they swing. They're completely operable.
So they're operable. So we can point them anywhere we want it to?
Anywhere we want it to. And they do fire. I do have a video of them shooting.
Blanks, absolutely.
Next slide. So again, this is kind of what she looks like from different angles and different sides. Now, she has set for 18 months without any maintenance done on her. So some of the paint right now, from what I've seen, some recent pictures, she does need some paint, but most of the rust and stuff have been taken care of. It's just surface-type stuff. Next slide. This was a picture of her, as you can see, 36 of 2008. This is actually when they moved her from where she was to dry dock. So this is a very current picture of what she looks like. And you can see some of the paint's faded a little bit, and it's basically because she hasn't had any care and maintenance for 18 months. When they got her to dry dock, they hooked up the electric and plumbing and everything. Everything works just like it did 18 months ago. So as far as work goes, I think we'll increase our volunteer staff. There is another group involved, which is called Epic, and they're the money source for the Orlick. They actually provide money. And I know from 2000 and 2006, they supply between $50,000 and $100,000 a year to maintain her. And they pledged that, to keep going with that, as long as, you know, if we get the Orlick and if we take possession of her.
Let me just make sure that this is a good picture to explain. Part of what they're going to have to do is take the tower down.
Yeah, now, the stacks, and you, and the stacks just above the radar, round radar thing that you see, the radar mask is 48 feet high. Now, we have 52-foot clearance on the Arkansas River. So everything that's higher than that, which is basically the black mask, will have to be removed and re-put back on.
And that would be part of the understanding in.
With them. They are going to remove it. Now, we may have to put it back on. I don't know. We haven't gotten that far, because we don't know if we're going to get it here or not. Yes, ma'am?
I was just sitting here thinking, will we be out of any money in this?
We will be out a little bit, if it comes all the way through. And you want to go to the next slide? Good place to come in. This is, Garver &amp; Garver actually did a overlay for us. They did some preliminary work to see what would be involved in actually putting the Orlick in place. What they found out when they overlaid the Orlick, which is the red section, if we take the three barges out, our spar poles work, our cables work, everything works exactly as it would today. The only difference we would have is we would have to raise the one end of the gangway seven feet. Just bring it up seven feet. But the gangways, everything else works, the electrical connections, everything that we have in place today works on the Orlick as it is. Now, to take all that apart and move it and put it all back together is going to cost between $45,000 and $50,000. Now, the other part of that that we're not sure of is whether or not we need one more spar pole, and that won't.
Make sure everybody understands what a spar pole is.
The spar poles are the big black poles that hold the barges out away from the bank. I don't know what our terminology would be for it, but.
Well, it's essentially standoff.
It's a standoff from the land that holds everything out, so that it doesn't crash into the bank. The cables actually hold it in place, but spar poles keep it from going into the bank. The one thing we don't know is if we'll need another spar pole or not. And that's when the mayor said it could be upwards to $100,000 if we got to add another spar pole. So taking it all apart, putting it all back together, we're looking at about $50,000.
And again, you know, we, there's no indication from us at this point that we would be in a position to accept that. That will be, once they say they can get her here, then we'll come with the details of exactly what it would take, and then the Council will have a chance to make that decision.
And so, can we go to the last slide real quick? Like I said, the Orlick right now, they have to remove the screws, and they have to remove the sonar dome. And the sonar dome hangs down about 20 feet underneath the Orlick, so obviously, it's got to go. They've removed the screws already. The sonar dome, they started taking off today, and there should be done with it on Friday. Now, talking to the guys, the foundation down in Orange, Texas, once they get all that removed, they'll get a true draft. And that will tell them whether or not they can get the Orlick here.
My question. Didn't we take all of the, in the depth of the Arkansas River, 12 feet?
Nine.
Depth is, the certified depth is nine feet. We were somewhere between 11 and 12 feet when we bought the Razorback up.
Right.
You know, we had, we'll say, you know, guidance by the Corps of Engineers. They did soundings. You know, the river was at a reasonable level. It wasn't at a low-water level, so to speak. So, you know, you can get a vessel up here for somewhere between, perhaps between 10 and 12, maybe a little bit more, you know, with some guidance by the Corps. And that's exactly what we did with the Razorback. So, you know, in terms of depth, we'll know more. But again, I wanted to bring this up at this point, to kind of give you all an idea. I know that, again, we were talking about it, but we were never at a stage where we really were seeking your approval. But we wanted to make sure that you knew where we were, since we had, you know, been, we'll say, our story had been shared on a little bit of a, not premature, but just a little bit of an early basis. So we wanted to make sure everybody knew exactly where we were, and that we had not committed anything. We're just looking at whether or not we're going to be in a position to be offered it.
Yeah, and our next step will be whether they come back to us and say, okay, we can get it there. Then I'll come back to you and ask if the city would like to take it or not. I mean, that's our next step, is not asking for anything. We don't have to do anything. We're basically waiting on them right now to say, we can do it. Because what they're doing is not inexpensive. They're doing a lot of work. None that they wouldn't have to do anyway, whether they was bringing here or not. But even if they scrap it, they would still have to do this type of work. But at least they'll, you know, they'll know at one time, probably towards the end of the week, whether or not it's feasible.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
And Greg, what would we do with the Razorback under this configuration? And for some, I thought we had a commitment with the Corps that we'd provide a space for them to park their workboat.
Can we go back one slide? The way, the way this all works out, actually, the Razorback will stay basically where it's at. It'll move out 10 feet into the river, because the Orlick's 10-foot wider than our barges. So the Razorback would move out. Now, our plans, and again, this is the engineering piece of it, is to move the Razorback all the way up to the very back of the Orlick, because the Orlick will actually be sitting downstream with its stern sticking upriver, okay? Move the Razorback all the way up to the stern, and then the lip skin should fit between the end of the Razorback and the bridge. So we don't have to have another barge. We don't have to have all that other stuff that we had to have to support the lip skin.
Yeah, we're essentially replacing the three barges with the, would be replacing the three barges, three barges?
Three barges.
We'd essentially be replacing the three barges with the, with the Orlick, and utilizing the same configuration.
Just shifting everything up a little bit, and it's something we couldn't do with the submarine and the barges, because of the entry points. We couldn't shift the Razorback up and still have access onto the Razorback. So we had to leave her center, the fuel barge or the service barge. But with the Orlick, the Razorback deck and the Orlick deck are going to be the same height, so we can move it all the way up forward, and that'll give us the room at the end for the lip skin to park to.
All right, Brian?
Yeah, on a side note, Greg, you know, I've been through the submarine several times. I appreciate it very much. And you and your volunteers have done a wonderful job on restoring that submarine. And I just want to say thank you. And if you, if you and your volunteers show the enthusiasm that they have on the Razorback for this ship, I think it would be a welcome addition to our, to the.
And I'll be honest with you, it opens up another volunteer pool for us, a big volunteer pool in Arkansas, because there are a lot of destroyer sailors that are biting at the bit to get down and help. So, thank you.
On the, you said $45,000 to $50,000, I guess, basically to retrofit it to the dock? Is that to retrofit this to the current dock?
Yeah, it's basically to disconnect everything, move it, move the Orlick in place, reconnect everything, some engineering in there and some other things.
That's what I was wondering. Is this from the 45,000 to 50,000, is that like material or is that manpower hours or?
Most of it would be just manpower, because of, you know, lifting cranes and disconnecting those spar poles are 22 inches.
Oh, okay. So that's not materials?
Yeah, very little of it would be materials.
Yeah, the only, as I'm told, the only significant cost, other than, you know, because you got to have a big crane, I assume, to lift those spar poles. And so the only significant cost, and not to say that $50,000 isn't significant, would be if, because of the engineering, we had to build another spar pole somewhere, you know, that would be used to connect the vessel. And that, I'm not sure we'd have an exact price. So we'll know exactly what the dollars are, if we get to the point where we're asking the community to do this, or the Council.
I know this is a little premature, but I'm just curious how this works. So that $45,000 to $50,000, is that for city employee manpower hours? Because, I mean, you've got to include that.
I don't think we have the equipment to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I think we use.
And I know that we would use city employees, though.
I think we used Mobley to put it all together last time, Mobley Construction, because that's, it's pretty heavy metal, and they come in with their cranes and their welders and did all that stuff. So almost all that was done by Mobley originally.
Okay.
I mean, we'd have an exact budget if, you know, we just didn't want to, you know, come up and, because, you know, as we know, and the HOGA is still, you know, is still out there, and I don't know.
Like an update on the HOGA?
Yeah, let's give us an update on that.
Okay, I talked to the Navy today. We submitted our lift and tow plan in February, and the Navy had 30 days to look at that and tell us yea or nay. Well, it's been six weeks, almost seven weeks now, since we submitted that, and they've had some problems. So I called them this morning and talked to them, and they said, our tow plan looked good, our lift plan looked good. They have some changes they want done to it, but for the most part, they're going to approve it. So that gets us over one more hurdle that we've been really fighting for the last year or so.
So that raises another question. Where would the HOGA go in this?
The HOGA would go right where it originally was planned to go, right between the bank and the Orlick, between the two spar poles. That don't change at all.
What's the likelihood that we'll need that additional spar pole?
I'm not an engineer, so I couldn't tell you. I'll be honest with you. I don't know the marine stresses and stuff that they have, so I would be totally guessing, to be honest. But we can find out. I mean, I get as much information upfront as I can.
We'll know that before we make our decision here, correct?
Uh, I, you know, I don't know, because part of that is actually doing the engineering piece of it. And, you know, and once they get the weight calculations and the speeds and the winds and all that, that'll determine when and if we need that spar pole.
Wait a minute. We, are you saying that we will not know whether we need a spar pole until she gets here?
Until we do the engineering piece.
Well, obviously, until we do the engineering. But that can be done prior to us making a decision, I would assume.
Yes. I mean, that can be done anytime. We just got to have the money to do that, which we didn't want to spend until we could find out that we had a chance of getting her.
We'll give you an exact financial track on what we, you know, what we need and when we need it, and, you know, prior to us voting on whether or not we want to accept that.
It'd be a good thing.
Now, the other thing, again, I want to make sure, you know, that, I mean, these are some things that may be coming together at a similar time, you know, but, you know, we're still trying to get the HOGA here. And we, you know, have indicated we're going to do our best to do that. And we'll, in all likelihood, need to come to the city for some assistance on that, when that's all said and done. So, you know, again, recognizing that, you know, the Council is the ultimate decision-maker on these things, but we don't want to surprise anybody.
That was my question on the HOGA. What are we looking at right now? I know the price has changed.
We really don't know. I mean, you know, we didn't know until today, you know, that we were going. I mean, you know, we fi, we didn't know until today, you know, that we were gonna have our lift plan approved. Now, that hasn't come in any writing, but, uh, you know, we have been waiting, well, actually, we wouldn't have been able to get the HOGA here anyway because of, of, of not being able to get her out of the water without, you know, some, two cranes that had been under long-term contract. So, to be honest with you, until we get a, uh, an actual indication of, from a hauler, what it's gonna take, we won't know. But you're probably looking at anywhere from, I'd say, just wild guess at this point. Of course, price of fuel is another thing that's somewhat up in the air. You're probably looking at somewhere between 250 and $300,000. Now, and, and, you know, that's unless fuel goes, uh, you know, out of sight. But any event, you know, Alderman Gaines?
Um, you may have said this, I was looking at something else when you first started that I was surprised about. Are you the one that goes down and inspects the Oerlik or did go look at it?
I haven't. In fact, I was planning on going Thursday, uh, to drive down to Orange and actually take a good look at her. I do have, uh, a couple of Marine survey reports. One was from 2006 and one was from 2007, uh, that I, I can share with you. They're about that thick, but, uh, that's basically says she's in pretty good shape. Uh, we have an EPA study on her for asbestos and lead paint and PCPs and they basically said, don't, they're there, don't do anything to them. So, you know, I do have all that information gathered and I'll be glad to share it with you guys if you want, but, uh, I do wanna go down and visually look at her before, uh, we get too far involved. And I, I, like I said, I was planning on doing that Thursday or Friday.
I assume then you'd be the one to make the recommendation for us to do this, is that right?
I, I would give you what I thought would be the best, but then that's gonna be up to you guys, I'll be honest with you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
One more question. How many visitors are y'all averaging right now and how many do you anticipate averaging when you get this here?
Uh, it's, it's changing every year. The first year we were here, we did about 13,000. Uh, the second year we were here, we did over 14,000. Now, last year was an interesting year because we were basically shut down half of June and all of July, but we still did 16,000. So, every year it's, it's going up, uh, which is a good thing. With the Oerlik, uh, being here, I would think that would probably increase quite a bit. Uh, and the other thing that the Oerlik does is it gives us places where we can have functions, uh, big parties, overnight stays, you know, some of the other big money type things that, that we really are limited to right now. But I couldn't tell you how much more it would increase.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Well, I do know that, uh, that, you know, we have gotten a tremendous amount of, uh, both publicity and certainly credit for, I don't know that I see hardly anything tourism-wise that doesn't have our submarine that's a part of that, uh, reflection. So, you know, the uniqueness of what we're a, a part of, I think, uh, bodes well for us and bodes well for the future, but let's, you know, just beyond that too. And, and, you know, this city is, is probably as aligned and is, uh, you know, involved, uh, with the military, uh, you know, because of Camp Robinson and our history there in World War I, World War II, uh, as well as the headquarters now of the Arkansas National Guard, Camp Hite, with the Marines and the Navy. Uh, and then in addition, uh, to, uh, Fort Roots, uh, we, we have a long tradition and, uh, and, and certainly a lot of respect and affection, uh, for men and women in, in uniform. And I know that it certainly does my heart good when we see folks, uh, both honoring, appreciating and reflecting and respecting on the, uh, the acknowledgement that this community does for those who have gone before in the, not only the, the, the Second World War, but certainly Korea and, uh, Vietnam, as well as the First Gulf War. So, without, uh, you know, standing over there next to the flag and making these comments, uh, you know, it, this, this community is, is well-respected and well-appreciated for what we've done. With that, any other questions? Thank you, uh...
Thank you.
I didn't intend for this to take as long. I apologize for those that are, you know, waiting, but, uh, you know, I wanted to make sure y'all were up to speed on where we are on our maritime museum. Uh, with that, uh, let me go ahead and convene, if anyone wants to make any comments, as I said, on the relocation of the power lines, I'll go ahead and convene this public hearing and, uh, and, uh, you know, not refresh my intent to hold it, I'll, and I'll hold it. The microphone's open. Going once, going twice, I'll, I'll recess this public hearing until same time, next council meeting. Uh, I know, uh, one council member, I believe, uh, on dumpsters, let me convene a public hearing on 0825, uh, regarding pickup time for commercial dumpsters. Who was the sponsor of that?
Alderman Witcher.
Alderman Witcher, you wanna introduce this, uh, or just open it for public comment?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll introduce it. Uh, some time ago, uh, I'd had a resident to contact me regarding, uh, dumpsters being, uh, emptied by various waste companies, uh, in the wee hours of the morning and extremely late at night. Uh, both, uh, Mr. Hite and I have fielded those calls over the years and I thought, well, you know, that the aggravation has, has reached a point where we might need to look at, uh, setting some regulations for them. Uh, as we got deeper into it, uh, I ended up discovering that, uh, as, as always, that the dumpster, the individuals or folks, whatever you wanna call them, uh, that would be Mr. Rathman, Mayor, if, if I can call on him to wander his way up this way, uh, that, uh, that they could cure those. Uh, and Mr. Hite had had good luck working with Mr. Rathman and Mr. Rathman was eager to cure the situation. So, let's, let's see what Mr. Rathman has to say and then we, we can carry on.
Well, well, thank you, Alderman Witcher. Uh, my name's Wayne Rathman, I'm the Senior District Manager for Waste Management and I am a citizen of North Little Rock. Um, as a citizen of North Little Rock and as, uh, uh, as a member of Waste Management, we've had a great relationship with the city of North Little Rock. Starting in, uh, May of 2002, we sponsored the, uh, North Little Rock Cleanup and have done so each year. And I know Alderman Parker, you're a big part of that now with, uh, with Margaret. Uh, in October of 2003, we started a recycling, curbside recycling program in North Little Rock, uh, and, uh, which has gone quite well. We've actually, to use the term, uh, that I saw in the last presentation, we've displaced well over 10,000 tons of material out of our landfills during that time. Uh, we were averaging about 2,300 tons or, uh, a year in that program, which, uh, I think is, uh, I think is a great credit to this community as, as well as, um, the work of our, our crews on the streets. Uh, in October of 2007, we partnered again with the city of North Little Rock at our Two Pine Landfill Facility. And, uh, at that time, we started taking the methane gas, which 20 years ago was not even thought about. Uh, matter of fact, we were the first in the state to put in a gas collection system. Well, now, we're not only collecting that gas, but we're taking that gas and converting it to electricity. And that electricity is being sold to North Little Rock Power and it, uh, attaches to the grid and, uh, my understanding, uh, there's enough capacity there, enough electricity for about 4,500 to 4,800 homes a month, uh, to carry their needs. So, these are some of the things that our company, uh, that we take pride in that we do. Uh, we also service residential as well as commercial customers and that's kinda how we got brought into this. And matter of fact, I've met two on the council, uh, through that issue, uh, and, uh, have began a good relationship. Um, we have over 3,300 commercial customers in North Little Rock and in many cases, they are very close to residential, uh, neighborhoods. Uh, our schools, um, many of our businesses up and down JFK, Camp, um, Broadway, I mean, most of our major thoroughfares, we deal with this. And when we do, we try to take it on a case-by-case and, and either, uh, reschedule it or, or try to do it at, at a better time whenever we find it. Uh, I'll be honest with you, we wouldn't start collecting garbage at 2:00 AM in the morning if it wasn't a necessity and a safety issue for both the city, the residents and our customers. Uh, we provide a very, uh, a need that, uh, all of our customers, that, you know, I, I can't help it, but that's what, we produce trash as a society. We're trying to reduce it and eliminate it, but it's still there. Uh, and it is, it's a tough thing to do and we try to do it as environmentally sensitive as we can. And at times, you know, we make poor decisions, we're humans, but we try to rectify that and respond very quickly and I think our company has shown that. Uh, I'm sitting here with the, uh, General Manager from, uh, BFI or Allied Waste and we are, uh, we're both very, um, responsive to, to the needs and, and to this issue, to, to let you know that we're here, uh, and that, uh, if we have concerns with this or if they come, cause they'll come to you. I've talked to several in the city and, mm, usually the responses will come to, to the group sitting, uh, before me. So, uh, but I will let you know that, we will respond to it quickly and address it, so. Murray, does, Alderman Witcher, has I touched upon some of it?
Sure, thanks, Wayne. All right, i- i- in regards to the inquiry that, 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 uh, that we talked about, uh, up on Park, in the Park, New Parkville area?
Yes, sir.
That, that was resolved to...
Yes, sir.
...to the individual satisfaction? Is that...
Yes, sir. Steve and I both went to the site. We took a look at the, uh, you know, we went to the, the resident's house, we went out, uh, about a thousand feet, took a look, identified what we thought was a container. Um, and there were two other, there's two churches beside it as well, and both of those are actually, uh, my competitors and he has, uh, he's rescheduled those and they're, they won't be serviced before. We called the resident, spoke with her and, uh, she's quite delighted it happened. She's said it may have been, uh, a rare occasion, happened once or twice, but the last time kinda caught her at a, uh, a bad time and, so, uh, that was her aggravation.
Okay. Mayor, I, I think Mr. Rathman has, has answered the, many of the questions that, that we had, uh, you know, and I, thank you, Wayne, I, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And, you know, if, if you wanna have anyone to ask any questions...
Uh, any council member care to ask any questions?
I'll go statement, Mike.
Wayne, I had a problem also with one of those and I know, did you get that one taken care of up on JFK?
Yes, ma'am, that, they relocated that container with the new owner and it is right beside that house and, uh, yeah, we're gonna...
Okay.
We're gonna reschedule that, that container.
And I will say Wayne was very nice and gave me his cellphone number and anytime I get a call, I'm calling him.
All right. We appreciate it, Alderman Gaines.
And I want the other cellphone number out there too.
And I have one, I don't know which one it is, but it's, I've talked to the owner of apartment complex, uh, at least three times because he's near a cemetery, Edgewood Cemetery in North Little Rock.
Yes, sir.
And it's right when the family comes through the cemetery, uh, by that apartment complex, there's a dumpster there. And I don't know what's...
BFI or...
I don't, I sure don't.
And that's Edgewood Cemetery?
Edgewood Cemetery, must be his then if it's not yours.
Okay. We will take a look and...
Please do that.
...visit tomorrow and get that, you, you want it moved?
Yes, sir, we could, yes, sir, please.
Yes, sir.
And cause the owner won't do it, I mean, the subscriber won't do it, you're, at all, he won't do it.
The apartment complex is...
No.
Okay.
I would also...
Thank you for being here.
Also, and, and, and I'm not sure if it's your company or your competitor's company, but I'd also like for you to look at the dumpsters that's there in Glenview, the Protho Manor Apartments, those dumpsters about, uh, the property lines of some of the homes there, there are two of them. So, if you all would look at that and see about relocating that, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me, uh, make sure, uh, we, we, Wayne, and who is your colleague there from BFI?
Uh, Steve Fallon.
Steve, uh...
Allied Waste.
Y'all wanna make sure that, uh, Ms. Whitby can get in touch with y'all, uh, so that, you know, we, we appreciate both of you being here and...
Protho Manor Apartments, Glenview.
Protho Manor Apartments.
Uh, but what we need to do is, is help them by identifying and make sure we get an exact location and which company is, they usually have stickers on the side, I'm sure.
I'll, I'll find out and give you a call.
Yeah. It was his.
It's his.
No.
Wayne, you need to borrow my pen again. You need to borrow my pen again, Wayne.
Yes, sir, I do.
Alderman Ross?
I think, I, I am serious about this, but I think all of us need, uh, your cellphone numbers rather than having to call Diane and it may be on a Saturday or whatever, you know, and we have somebody that's very upset about it and we would appreciate if we all... And don't, not here, I mean, you don't have to tell everybody, but I'm just saying...
Well, what my intent was is to get Diane and then distribute it to us.
Okay, okay.
That was my intent.
That'll work.
Or I'll just give everybody Wayne's right now if you want it.
So, Ms. Whitby, if you will get those numbers and then distribute them to the council please.
Mayor, can I just wanna say a, put in a good word for not only Steve, but for Wayne Rathman. In my eight, almost eight years as, uh, serving as Alderman, when an issue like this came up, uh, I've contacted, we worked on this seven years ago, we worked on dumpsters being, uh, serviced we, in the wee hours of the morning over at Lakewood Village and Wayne, uh, proposed a couple of changes and we got that taken care of and I haven't had any calls from those residents over in that area and I'll probably get some now, but anyway, Wayne has always, uh, immediately responded to a phone call. And they, there are some areas in North Little Rock that, uh, because of safety of not only the, uh, the people that work at the business, but the customers of, of restaurants early in the morning, cause they don't want the, the dumpster companies in there servicing those dumpsters while people are, are going to eat breakfast in the wee hours of the mornings. They want them in there before that and they, and they've worked through those and so, uh, not only does, uh, Waste Management do a good job in resolving these, but so does Allied Waste, which used to be BFI and then the other one, uh, I forget the, call the name of it, but, you know, they've always been good to work with me and Murray, so I, I, they'll, anytime something like this comes up, if you'll contact Wayne or Steve, they'll, uh, do everything they can to get it resolved in a very short fashion.
Anything else?
Are there any more dumpster companies in the city?
I'm not a, I'm not aware, are there?
Yes.
None. Do y'all have any more competitors other than the two of y'all?
Uh, WCA, yes, sir, and I've spoken.
Okay, well, we need some phone numbers for them too, Ms. Whitby, so...
WCA?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, with that, uh, let me just ask, do you wanna, uh, take, cause normally we also dovetail in the legislation and, and I'm gonna go ahead and indicate that I'll hold 0822, which I indicated earlier, but I'll go ahead and take that action now.
Hey, Mayor.
Just a second, uh, and, uh, now, do you have another question?
Uh, I'm gonna ask you about something.
Okay.
Uh, I wonder if we could recall, I would look something, Correspondence Number Six for discussion.
Okay, sure.
All right, Mayor, I think based on the conversation, unless someone else steps forward regarding the dumpsters that...
Okay, nevermind, yeah, I'm back there.
I'm interested in withdrawing that.
What, 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 excuse me?
Real quickly, I'd like to say that...
No, no, timeout, just a second.
Okay.
I'm gonna make sure I know where we are, uh...
I'm sorry, I thought we were done, my fault.
Yeah.
0825, I wanna withdraw it.
Okay, so you're gonna withdraw that?
Oh, that's good, but I'd like to say real quickly that when I call Wayne or one of them, they respond to the people as well as y'all, quickly as they do y'all.
We appreciate it, okay. Now, now you're withdrawing that, so there's really no need to continue the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we'll adjourn that public hearing then. And now we'll go back, uh, Alderman Gaines wanted, uh, Ms. Whitby, I know that we, uh, approved it in the blanket motion, but I certainly don't have any problem with calling Number Six back in the communication. Would you please read that, uh, and let's take some individual action on it without objection?
Yes, sir, it's a memorandum from Charlotte Thomas, the mayor's office, it's regarding an alcoholic beverage request for Amelia Hernandez, doing business as Takira Guadalahara at thirty-eight eleven Camp Robinson Road. The request is for an application for Sunday alcoholic beverage sales, retail beer on premises, and your office received this today.
And we did, and the problem is, if that's thirty-eight eleven, I'll have to ask my fellow Alderman Ward one if that's on the west side of camp or the east side. I think it's the west side, the Walmart Shopping Center, and if it is, that would not be where, I don't think, Alderman Parker and I would want a liquor permit there, yes.
They're applying for Sunday, they already have one.
The permit's there, they're just simply asking for Sunday.
Never mind, never mind.
Now, the permit's already there, this is just asking for Sunday sales.
It's retail beer on premises, permit number four.
I guess that's a restaurant.
A restaurant, okay, all right.
I would imagine, I think it's on the east side.
West.
West side? Okay, anything you want to do?
Drop it.
Okay.
Accept and file then.
All right, it's already been accepted and filed, we'll just go back to the unfinished business. Ms. Whitby?
Resolution oh eight twenty-one, Mayor Hayes.
I'm gonna call, hold that.
Ordinances, ordinance oh eight oh nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance adopting the Arkansas Mechanical Code two thousand and three edition, second, third, and final reading.
In discussion. The council member have heard me talk about that, you know, before we go any further, we need to get a motion and a second, and then we'll open the floor if we get that. Any council member care to?
Move for adoption.
There a second? All right, discussion?
Well, I was gonna tell you, I know we've, we've held them off a long time, and Little Rock charges these fees, and I've had problems over there, we may not can do anything about it, but, but I'm gonna have to vote against it anyway, but I understand what you're doing.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
Well, let me just mention, we're, you know, we've got to put this in place, there's got to be, you know, enforcement, you know, we'll come back with you, and rest assured, we're not gonna have this set up tomorrow or the next day, so let me indicate to the council and to the community that nothing will be taken with respect to this code now until I work with planning, and we have a, an implementation plan that we'll bring back to you, so just, you know, make sure everybody knows that we're not gonna be out issuing permits tomorrow by any means, even though that the emergency clause was, cause was adopted, we're gonna have an implementation plan that makes some kind of sense in terms how we go forward, since we've never had this, so, you know, it's, it's not gonna happen tomorrow or the next day, and we'll come back to council and let y'all know exactly what we think would be the most prudent way to implement this.
I think that we have to do it almost, but I always like to have something that Little Rock doesn't have, you know, they, they charge that, and they've been really concerned because we're not charging over here, see, and they do collect a lot of money, this brings in quite a lot of money, but I just felt like that it's another burden, and, but I understand the mayor's point, we've, we've talked about this many times before, and we've, we haven't done it before, so I understand.
And, and it's not our intent to make any money, it's our intent just simply to shoulder the cost of implementing this, so with that, we'll work with planning and, and code to develop a reasonable implementation plan, we'll let the council know, as well as the community, how we intend to move forward in an orderly and sensible way. Next item?
Ordinance oh eight fourteen, Mayor Hayes.
I'm gonna go ahead and, and hold that, I may end up withdrawing this, but at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and hold it, we're looking at the Siemens contract, this is the financing for that contract, we're leaning very strongly against going in a different direction, so in all likelihood, I'll end up withdrawing this, and we're trying to determine what parts of that contract and how we exactly intend to ask the council for letting us go forward.
Mayor, you said you're leaning strongly against going in a different direction, or you're leaning strongly in going a different direction?
Strongly in going a different direction with regard to the financing.
Okay.
So, in all likelihood, I'll be withdrawing this, and to the extent that we go forward with slices of that, we'll hopefully make a decision within the next couple of weeks. Next item?
New business, resolution oh eight twenty-seven, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution reappointing Bruce Waller to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh eight twenty-eight, Mayor Hayes.
I'd just like to say one thing.
Sure.
And I probably should have said that Bruce probably isn't here, but he is a very valued member of that council, he, I was fortunate enough to serve with him on that, on that commission for several years before I got on the council, and I'd like to thank Bruce personally for, for taking another term, because he's a valued member of the Parks Commission, thank you, Bruce.
Mayor, I'd like to also say that I've had the pleasure of knowing Bruce Waller for forty years, and I served in the National Guard with Bruce, and he is a tremendous asset to this city because of his service on the Parks and Rec, and I'd like to say out loud thank you, Bruce, too, so.
Ditto.
And we all agree, I know, I didn't see him out here, and that's why I didn't dismon acknowledge him, but we certainly, as, as the council has indicated, acknowledge his past service, and we appreciate his willingness to continue on. Next item?
Resolution oh eight twenty-eight, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution reappointing Chandra Martin to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
Mayor, may I have a moment, please?
Sure.
I have had the privilege of serving with Ms. Mitchell, both on the North Little Rock School Board sometime ago, and on the Senior Citizens Commission for the last couple of years. She is a great lady, she's, she's very civic minded, I think an awful lot of her, and I appreciate the council doing this for Ms. Mitchell, and I know that the commission does also thank you. She's provided great leadership, particularly for an area of town that we've tried to get involved with the Senior Citizens Commission, and she has represented them well, and when she will be able to come back and speak for those individuals, I know that she will do that.
And we also underline, you know, what you said, and the many other things that she's done throughout her career, so with that, on the motion?
It's already been voted on.
It's already been voted on, well.
Next item?
Please call it.
Resolution oh eight thirty, Mayor Hayes.
Can I get a motion for adoption, and then I'll ask Mr. Gertz to come up here?
Actually, I've, I've gotta read it.
Good idea.
Okay. A resolution approving acceptance of a settlement agree, or settlement offer from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding assessment of headwater benefits for the Murray Hydroelectric Project.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, let me tell you, one way to get a settlement is to send you a bill for a million dollars, and then agree to settle for something significantly less, so that's basically what this was, we got a bill for some, was it more than a million?
The original assessment was a million and thirteen thousand.
Okay, well, then I was about as close as I could guess, and, you know, and why don't you explain what that is, and what's going on, and why we think, you know, less than one-fifth of what they originally said we owed, that we're now asking the council to approve?
Well, the federal government has determined that the hydro facilities that it has on the Arkansas River that are located upstream of the Murray lock and down, that these hydro facilities regulate flow on the Arkansas River, and as a consequence of their regulation of the flow on the Arkansas River, the Murray facility is able to generate more power than it otherwise would if those facilities were not there. So as a consequence of that, they have decided to tax us, in effect, for the benefit they believe that we receive from those facilities. And in taxing us, they're looking back, actually, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and seven, and levied an original assessment of a million and thirteen thousand dollars, and that was based upon a average energy gain of around forty-seven hundred megawatts that they thought we received due to their regulation. We ended up contesting that and hired the, and a consultant out of Atlanta to help us contest the way that they modeled the flows on the Arkansas River, and there are a number of different issues there, and I won't get into the technicalities of the modeling, but in essence, they, they came around to our assessment of the model, and the errors that we thought were in the model, and as a consequence of that, they reduced the assessment to nine hundred and eighteen megawatt hours a year. And so that's what this settlement agreement relates to, is the nine hundred and eighteen megawatt hours a year, and the settlement is actually for around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and then they also charge us for the work that they did to evaluate our assessment, so that's additional thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars that we're, we're charged. The total, the total settlement is for a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and based upon the information that we have received from our consultant and the modeling that's been performed, we would agree with that assessment. In addition to that, we also were able to achieve a settlement going forward of thirteen thousand dollars a year, so unless there's some significant change of flows on the Arkansas River, or in the cost of power, then our assessment for that years will also stay at, at thirteen thousand dollars a year.
Alderman Bryant?
Yeah, can we then turn around and have them pay us when we can't run the plant? Because they're turning loose too much water?
I don't think it works that way, Alderman.
Wait a minute.
You've heard of what they call the ladder theory, and we're at the bottom of it.
Yeah. I mean, it would obviously make sense that if they're charging us whatever they're charging us, then when they don't provide the water to us, because they're turning too much water, then it should be able to go the other way, that's not part of it, don't you?
Well, you know, in addition to this assessment, we pay them three hundred thousand dollars a year just to regulate us, and then on top of that, we also-
Sorry, I'm sorry, brought it up.
I'll be happy to make you a special emissary to, between us and the federal government, if you want to take on that mantle, we'll be happy to mantle you as best we can. Any other questions?
One quick one, was this in the budget, or where would the money come from, or?
We had, we had originally budgeted in November of last year, two hundred thousand dollars, and that was based on the one million, and what we, what we determined that, you know, nobody could just fork out a million dollars in one year that we'd negotiate a payment schedule if, if we ended up with a million dollars.
Oh, okay.
So, there is two hundred thousand dollars in the oh eight budget for this.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got, I'm just curious, this is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that's accumulated over a period of twelve years? We're gonna have an annual bill?
From nineteen ninety-five through two thousand and seven.
Thirteen thousand.
That's, yeah, that's twelve years.
The question is, is there gonna be a charge in the future?
Going forward, there-
Annual charge of roughly a thousand fifteen hundred dollars?
It's around thirteen thousand.
Thirteen.
At this point, that's what we've-
That's an annual charge?
Yes, sir.
All right. You can assist Alderman Bryant in your lobbying up in Washington.
Yeah, we'll make it a dual committee. Any other questions?
I'm staying out of this fight, Murray.
Any other questions? While Mr. Gertz is up there, just in case, he and I traveled last Tuesday, Wednesday? Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Last Wednesday to the quarterly meeting of, of the interest holders at Plum Point, and, and I can happily report that that plan is going up, we kicked the tires, we, you know, we didn't get out too much, because the rain had just been, you know, inundating us, but the Mississippi was up, but not that high, and it's very close, obviously, the alternate methods of transportation for the fuel between rail and, and water, obviously, were available, the plant's basic superstructure appeared to be by and large up, they are virtually on, on schedule, I think they were concerned that there may have been a slippage of two to three weeks somewhere in, in that neighborhood, obviously, there was some hope that they might make that up, but everything seems to be progressing, it's one of the cleanest construction sites that I think I've seen, and it appeared that those that were there were, are gonna be very good partners with us, and, and the construction team knew what they were doing, and were, were progressing very orderly, and, and that the materials were, were there, you know, so for anybody that, you know, wants to see it, you're welcome to, I'm sure Mr. Gertz and I'll arrange it, but we need to probably do it in conjunction with a, with another quarterly meeting, and we'll let you know when the next one's coming up, but it does one so good to see forty-five dollar a megawatt hour power, and if anybody wants to see it, I'll be happy to, you know, I took a snapshot or two, so, just a brief report that, you know, that Plum Point is well underway. Is any other questions from the council on Plum Point? We're continuing to explore other alternatives, and, and we hope, within the not-too-distant future, to be able to, to look at addressing our electric rates. With that, thank you, Mr. Gertz, next item?
Do you want to vote on the motion first?
Yeah, I think we ought to, you're good, good point, Ms. Whitby.
Alderman Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
And Mr. Gertz, tell our folks that we appreciate the good negotiating, both for you and your staff, as well as for our consultants, you know, it, it's always nice when we're, when you're the lowest rung of the ladder, and, and if you need any, any contesting of that, Alderman Bryant has raised his hand. Next item?
Resolution oh eight thirty-one, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the donation of certain property from Floral Properties Partnership.
Let me get a motion on that, if I could.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
That is a property that is, is owned by, basically, the person we've been negotiating with is Jim Kincanon, it's a little slice of bank property on the riverside of Riverfront Drive, and they have been kind enough to indicate to us that they would give that to the city, and we certainly appreciate it, and this is a part of what we're intending to use in the development of our riverbank, particularly as we go forward with the, you know, with rock water development, and increased activity along the banks of the Arkansas, so that's generally where that's located, and, you know, there's another companion kindness, we'll say, the Corker family, Sue Corker, I see is here, that actually, we own, then, then the Corker family owns, and then the Floral Properties Partnership owns, so it's essentially all connecting, and we are looking forward to the continued movement of enhancing our community by the development of that area, and we certainly acknowledge and appreciate both of these donations, as we, as it certainly puts us in a better position to work with them, and, and other opportunities.
Mayor, this doesn't include that property, then, they're on the river, on the riverside of River Road that the people have been maintaining, and they built a gazebo, right?
No.
Okay, and the eastern, the eastern boundary of the property that the Corkers are donating, what's on the eastern boundary of that property, is it?
The eastern boundary is us.
Is us, it's gonna be, okay, is that gonna?
That was donated to us some four, five years ago, or three, four years ago.
So this, the, the, the first bit of property runs up to that property that's being maintained? The first bit of legislation?
Yeah, that means, our property, the Corker property, and this property.
Okay, and then on the east, on the western edge of this property is owned by, I'm not sure who that is, do you know who?
Well, they're about four, five property owners.
Is there four, five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, sir, I was, Mayor and I were both down at the River Trail Saturday, and there, the people that had that gazebo built have got a boat dock out there, and their ramp was totally underwater to that boat dock.
That's the Ron Burke family.
Okay, yeah.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-eight thirty-three, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the donation of certain property from Corker Family LLC.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Sue, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next item.
Resolution oh-eight thirty-four, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars from Act eight thirty-three funds for the purchase of a Ward no-smoke vehicle exhaust removal system for the fire department engine number four.
Any motion?
I move.
There's a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-eight thirty-five, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Ross and Bryant.
We all want that call.
Resolution allowing certain qualified employees of the city of North Little Rock to receive extended paid FML, family medical sick leave for care of a spouse or child with a serious health condition.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Anyone want to comment on this? It's a really, I think it's a good thing that we're able to do this. Now, let me just explain it real quickly. We have a number of employees, in fact, I'm proud to say, a lot larger number than I thought, who have well in excess of three hundred sick days that they've accumulated. This essentially will allow them, as indicated in the heading of the legislation, to, when they have a spouse or a child, to be able to take some of those sick days down to three hundred for care of that child or spouse. The second thing is that this by its own nature expires at the end of this year. It's my intent to see how this year has gone and in all likelihood, ask the city attorney to please put this on your calendar for renewal, say during the month of one of the council meetings in November, so that we can, you know, assess to ensure that, you know, that it's doing what we hope it will do and then move for its continuation. You know, one of our employees only gets to leave with ninety days, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Sisson. And so these additional days, you know, sick days are for sickness. We all know that. And we all know that unfortunately, whether it be our employees or not, and I like to think their minimum, sometimes abuse those. And this class of employee, definitely say, is in the class that does not abuse those. So with that, on the motion.
Quick question.
Okay.
Can we?
I shouldn't have said anything.
Can we unilaterally make a decision like this without approval of our individual surrender contracts?
Sure.
To the city?
I mean, our city attorney wouldn't let us do anything that's not legal.
Yeah, this is fine. You can.
Okay. Well, then can we take anything back from them? The unilateral decision?
Yeah, well, there's...
No, no, I, I intend to support this, but I was, you know, there was just a concern that we were making this decision unilaterally without them signing off on it.
We're, the short answer is, is we're giving them something they don't already have. We're not taking something away. Thus, we can make that decision unilaterally. If we were taking something away, that would go through the negotiating process with those who have contracts.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Ross?
Well, what I want to say, this is, this is a benefit for employee, dedicated employees that do not abuse their sick leave, like you said. To have three hundred sick days, you've had to have been here fifteen years and never missed a day with your twenty sick days that you get a year. So that's truly a dedicated employee. And, you know, like the mayor said, we've got ninety-three employees in the city that have that. And, you know, I've had people say, why did you not put it at two hundred and fifty? Why didn't you put two hundred? We've got to start somewhere. This is a starting point. If it's not abused, if we see it's working, then we can always lower.
We have voted or have not? On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-eight thirty-six, Alderwoman Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring April to be child abuse prevention month in the city of North Little Rock.
Alderman?
This particular legislation, can I make comments?
Sure.
The purpose of this legislation is just to make everyone aware that the month of April nationwide is child abuse prevention month. And just like to make the people aware, you know, in North Little Rock, of the problem and encourage people to call, to make a report to the hotline. The hotline is manned by the Arkansas State Police. And when a call goes into the hotline, they make the decision whether the state police should investigate or if they should contact DHS Children and Family Services to take care of it. And also to encourage people that if you know of a family that's having problems, to make every effort to connect them to resources.
There's a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-eight thirty-seven, Alderwoman Ross?
Please call it. And I need to add Alderman Bryant's name to it because it was left off.
A resolution appropriating four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from Dark Hollow impact fees for the construction of a drainage ditch, ditch, and pipe in the alley east of Vine Street between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets.
There a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinances, ordinance oh-eight twenty-seven, Alderman, Whicher, and Height.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending section fourteen point twenty-six, off-premises signs of ordinance seventy-six ninety-seven, the zoning ordinance, to establish clear procedures and preferences to the signed bank. Second reading.
Move suspend the rules, place on third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinances, ordinance oh-eight twenty-eight, Alderwoman Ross?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending article eight, nuisances of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter on Nuisance, Abatement, and Property Maintenance. Ordinance number eighty, eighty-oh-one, first reading.
Move suspend the rules and place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinances, ordinance oh-eight twenty-eight, Alderwoman Ross?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance amending article eight, nuisances of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter on Nuisance, Abatement, and Property Maintenance. Ordinance number eighty-oh-one, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place on third reading.
Second.
After we call the vote, then I'll recognize you. On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
In ordinance amending article eight, nuisances of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter on Nuisance, Abatement, and Property Maintenance. Ordinance number eighty-oh-one, third and final reading.
Question?
I have a question regarding section eight, three, three, one, special rules for basketball goals. And my question is the administrative reclamation fee of twenty-five dollars per goal. We don't think that that would be a hardship on some folks?
Well, obviously, it would be for whoever's got to write the check. It would be more money than zero. I think the intent, whenever we had sat and worked on the, on the ordinance, the intent of putting the reclamation fee in place is, is not to penalize someone, it's just to recoup our costs. And that's only in situations where a goal has to be moved. I, I think Mr. Wadley can provide you better information than I can, but I, the impetus that I got behind that was for the rare occasion that we do have to pick up a goal, and that it is pretty rare that we actually get one, that we could just recoup our cost.
Well, I guess my concern is with some parents, or single parents anyway, they probably just let us keep the goal and we may end up having an auction of basketball goals. But I just think that, you know, we may, we should probably relook at that. Because when I look at it, and, and I'm not in agreement with kids playing ball on the streets. I'm, I am against that. But when I look at this, number one, they got to probably hire a truck to go get the goal. That's probably about twenty, twenty-five dollars. Then they got to pay us twenty-five dollars to get it. So we may end up just having a lot full of basketball goals.
That's true.
The problem I have, though, is people, that's so dangerous. It's so dangerous for those kids out there in the street because they're interested in that ball and somebody's gonna run over them. That's what scares me.
And if we ended up having a whole bunch of goals, then maybe we come back and do something about it. That'd be my feeling. But, yeah, obviously, you all... Alderman Ross?
I'm just curious, is Mr. Wadley here? How many goals we've actually picked up?
He's here.
And are the...
We had to pick up two goals. We have issued citations for others. And the others have been, once we posted saying that we're going to move them, they were moving from the street.
So they've had warnings before you picked them up?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So they've been warned?
The majority of them disappeared. Now, there's some that are on cul-de-sacs that we can't find owners to at all, that nobody wants to claim, and so we're gonna have to move them. I mean, we can't, there's some of them that we can't even find anybody to write a citation to. Any other questions, Alderman?
What's the charge of the citation? Or is there any charge for it when you give a citation?
That would be up to the judge.
Okay. Like, we had to have one moved in Bellwood last week. And what they did, the code officers and I set up, let's up and move it in their yard.
And we just asked them to move it off the city right away. Of course, their experience is they come back at night a lot of times and put it back in the street. So I see Ms. Robinson now, and I think she's experienced that out in her neighborhood.
But if we had a policeman go back out there the next time, and they, and they really stopped it since anyway. But, okay, thanks.
Alderman Ross?
This is Mr. Wadley. But the reason that my name is on this is because of the shopping carts, something that we can enforce an administrative fee. It's passing a twenty-five dollar fee. The code department has been picking up the shopping carts around the city.
Yes, ma'am, we've picked up many shopping carts.
And they've been on a lot. And we've just been giving them back to the stores. And what this is, this places a twenty-five dollar fee on the shopping carts to reclaim their fee, their shopping carts. And if someone sees, if this is passed and someone does see the shopping carts on the street, would they call you, the code department? So call the code department if you see a shopping cart.
And the street department's also...
I saw one on my way here for you. I forgot you one.
We're, we're gonna be able to enforce this shopping cart.
We're picking them up now. I bet we picked up over a hundred, and, and we're returning them.
We've been doing it for free for the stores.
I think this simply, as I understand what the Alderwoman is doing, is simply gives us an ability to recoup some of our costs for this sort of circle and returning our garbage, I mean, our garbage, our shopping carts.
Shopping carts.
Yes. There's no incentive right now for businesses to keep track of their own shopping carts because the city is...
We're picking them up for them.
Spending the manpower to put them in a corral, and then they just come pick them up once we get them and take them back. And then...
I, I don't have a problem. I mean, I think the legislation is great. But I just, you know, I guess what the stores need to do is just run out there and stop people from taking their carts.
Well, in the past, they've hired people to go through the neighborhoods and pick them up, but evidently, they don't have those people anymore. And so it's just, so now they're just letting the city pick their carts up. And, and we've been very generous in terms of doing that, returning them to them.
This may motivate them to go out and start picking them up again.
Well, either that or we'll get a little bit of offset of what our costs are.
Maybe. I know in our area out there, too, the, the stores, they hate very much that people do that, but they don't see them. They take them away. And maybe, maybe they just couldn't use them at all because people, they could do that. They could just get rid of the carts. That's what I do.
Well, by this, by doing this, we're saving them money, actually, because those carts are ending up in the ditches and they're not useful to them anyway. This way, they can come back and for twenty-five dollars, they can get a decent cart back that hasn't been in the ditch for six months.
I'm gonna try to talk ours out, just use, not use any carts at all.
That's good.
Any other discussion? I think we, let's get a motion for adoption on third and final.
I'll move.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0829, Alderman Bryant and Ross.
Please call him.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a light auto repair and service shop in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3504 Share Street in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Place it on second reading.
On the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a light auto repair and service shop in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3504 Share Street in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Yes.
Bryant? Ross? I saw Whicher's hand go up, so I was hesitating. Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd kinda like to talk about this for a moment.
And if you want to, we sure will. Let's just talk about it now.
Okay, while I was not at the planning commission meeting, you know, I read the minutes, and I noted that the staff recommended opposition to approving this, and then the commission voted unanimously to approve it. I guess my thoughts in, for Robert, sometimes I agree with him, and sometimes I don't. This is one of those that I, you know, I would like to see us support the staff on, and these are the reasons why. Levy has worked very hard to clean that area up and to improve that area. The neighbors in that area have worked very hard to lift themselves up. We have spent a great deal of money in that area with curbs and gutters to try to enhance that area, and it, everything that we have done, I think, has helped in that area. My opinion is that this is not in keeping with the efforts that have occurred down in that area, and so then, and I would hope to generate some discussion.
You said the last time.
It's not in keeping with the enhancements that have occurred in the Levy area.
We are, we're ready for third reading, if we suspend the rules, or where are we?
It needs to be read a third time.
All right, then go ahead and read it.
This is an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a light auto repair and service shop in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3504 Share Street in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Okay, now, we're gonna take a motion to do anything.
I move.
Motion made and seconded to adopt on third and final. We're in discussion now, Alderman Ross.
This is Alderman Bryant and our ward, and we did discuss this, and while I do agree with staff, it was approved by the planning commission, which I also think we need to respect their wishes. As far as cleaning up the Levy area, I don't think anybody's working harder than Neil and I are doing over on our side, and I know that Parker and Gaines are working on theirs also. And I know Mr. Tolliver's here, and I've spoke with him several times, and he is aware that if for any reason, any of these conditions are not followed, we will be in there talking to him.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. Mr. Tolliver and I have talked on the phone, and he's been a business owner down there for a long time, and is also part of the group that's helping Levy, and I very much appreciate you being here tonight, and I'd like to offer the opportunity for you to say something now.
Well, I've been introduced. My name's John Tolliver, Congressman, I mean Alderman, Whicher. Have you seen the place?
I have, I've represented that area for about twenty, about twelve, twelve years, so I'm familiar with it.
It's pretty bleak, and as it stands right now, I think that I've been saddled with, and I've agreed to it, close to maybe $10,000 worth of improvements before I can ever do what I need to do there. I've gotta put a sidewalk all the way down the front of Share Street, which the city's not gonna have to do, I'm gonna have to do it. I've got to put in, I think it's five or now, maybe seven, huh?
Six.
Six. I've gotta put in six hardwood trees, but I'm not talking about shrubs, I'm talking about trees, and I've been pricing them, and they're not cheap. And I've got to put in a row of shrubs all along Share Street and all along 35th Street. And I can have a gate there on two entrances to my place, or what might be my place. There's one gentleman that's on your planning commission that used to be, or still is, a landscape architect, and at the conclusion of our meeting, he said, well, it looks like that'll be the oasis in Levy if we get all this done. And somebody asked the question, will all this have to be done before I'll be given a permit to open? And the answer was yes. So, if you're looking for some beautification in Levy, this is your opportunity. There'll be no cars outside, there'll be no wrecked pieces of salvage around there, there'll be no, I mean, I was down there with the building inspector the other day, and there were more cars on that lot than will be on that lot when I own the place. There were probably six or seven vehicles, some of them look like they've been parked there for days, and I don't know if they belong to the firemen or who they belong to, but I'm not allowed to keep a car overnight on the lot. Everything I do has got to be put inside at night. I've got no materials to be left outside, and nothing that I can sway with on that kind of business. All my work's gonna be inside, and I explained this to the planning people, that the neighborhood around there should, this should be transparent to them that anything's going on there. We're open eight to five, and we're open eight to two on Saturday, and the work that we plan on doing there is not major overhaul. This is gonna be a service department, and quite frankly, I think it'll be a huge improvement to the city of Levy.
Alderman Height? I'm just curious, we've had a couple of bits of legislation come up in front of us here recently where the residents of a particular neighborhood got up and had a tremendous campaign and opposition for something, and I haven't heard from anybody, yea or nay, concerning this, and I'm gonna disagree with Alderman Whicher. I think, based on this list of conditions here, that this business down in between 35th and 36th on Shayer may be a benefit to that area, so I'm gonna, I'm supporting it. Alderman Ross?
My one question is, under nine here, it says the hours of operation are 7:30 to 5:00. Is 5:00 gonna give people time to get, pick up their car after work if they drop it off on the way, have someone take them to work? I know when I dropped mine off, you know, if you get off at 4:30, you're really gonna, I was just wondering how the 5:00 was gonna work.
It's probably rare that we'll have to do that. Most of the time, if you can't make some other arrangements, if you just simply can't, then I might just stay there and wait on them, you know, until they get there, and maybe, I mean, I don't think that I'm gonna be fined for staying open past 5:00, but if I need to stay there and wait for a customer for a half hour, I will.
We wanna amend that to 6:00, I think is what she's suggesting.
After 6:00?
Well, amend the 5:00 to 6:00.
I think it should be changed to 6:00, actually.
I'll take that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, on the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
On the emergency Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0830-
Call him, and note that that's a unanimous vote, and we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Good.
Next item?
0830, Alderman Gaines.
Let me, Alderman Gaines and I have had a chance to visit about this legislation. I know that I was contacted by one developer out there who expressed some surprise at the fact that it was on the agenda for tonight. I know that signs, as we have dealt with before, always seem to produce opinions, and as such, you know, without opposition, and perhaps with his support, Alderman Gaines and I discussed the possibility of referring this back to the planning commission, asked them to notify the, both business owners as well as property owners in the affected area, and to solicit, or at least hold a public hearing, and to notify those various parties of interest about that public hearing, take testimony on that, have a hearing on that, and then make a recommendation to us with regard to what they feel ought to be done, if anything. And unless I hear differently, Alderman Gaines didn't have a problem with that.
No, what I wanna add to it, though, is that, how much respect I have, Ward 3 has the planning commission and Norman Clifton and chairman of that, and Commissioner Phillips, there was a small misunderstanding. Robert, you've been a real blessing for 15 months with this, so we'll go back and redo this, but with clear understanding, I really support the planning commission, but this is like taking a knife to a gunfight, we're a little short on what we can do here, okay? I wouldn't wanna do this again. About 15 months from now, let's do this again.
Let me just, just to see if I can get the council on record, if Alderman Gaines will move that we refer this planning commission, would that-
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And for them to notify and take, have a public hearing, and then make a recommendation to us, on the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
And one final thing, I know that there's perhaps some confusion with regard to, Robert, you wanna come to the microphone just a second, monument signs versus-
Pylons.
Versus what?
A freestanding pole sign.
Pole signs. And I know there's a question about what they, what authority as well as responsibility the planning commission has with regard to imposing certain signs versus certain other signs under our ordinance. I'm asking if the city attorney will share with you his opinion as to what that latitude is with regard to the planning commission, and you share that with the planning commission as to what their responsibility might be concerning those options.
Will do.
Thank you. I think that concludes, Ms. Whitby, the agenda. Before I open it up to any council member and then our public hearing, let me just underline my appreciation to this council and this community for indeed putting our best foot forward over the past weekend. We had somewhere between, I'd say, 25 and 35,000 guests that set foot on our real estate, and I can tell you in talking to the athletic director, Chris Peterson, Michael Marion, the manager of Altel Arena, as well as various partners that we've had in putting our, on our show for the past four to five days, as Friday and Sunday were our big days. I can tell you that all the comments, we had a couple of hiccups. One on Friday, the arena had a little challenge in finding some of their volunteers to man some of the concession stands at Altel, but outside of that, that's the, it wasn't inconsequential when you look at, we receive out of every dollar, 4.16 cents of those sales, so, you know, we're very interested in people being able to make those purchases, and yet, outside of that, everything else that I heard with regard to this city, and certainly this city, that was an arena, we'll say umbrella that that fell under, has been nothing but glowing terms. So, let me express on behalf of all of us how proud we were to be the host geographically, and then partnership with Little Rock in terms of the overall host, with ULR being the lead. And I heard enough comments to believe that, should we go again, that we may very well see that tournament return. Again, we have the NCAA, not the NCAA, the Southeast Conference Women's that are gonna be with us this next year, if I'm not mistaken, and I could go through others that are finding our geography as pleasing as we do. So, thanks to our employees, thanks to police, as well as Public Works, and everybody that pitched in on making this a really grand opportunity to show off our community. With that, any council member, Alderman Height?
Just one, two things. I sit next to the head of the Little Rock Convention Bureau, Dan O'Brien, yesterday at, and he assured me that he was gonna get up bright and early this morning and start the process of applying for the NCAA first or second or third round here in three years from now. The other thing I wanted to do is I wanna take a moment of grandfatherly privilege and to announce that, and I'm probably gonna start dominoes falling here, but I'm gonna announce that the number of Heights living in Ward 4 is gonna increase by one somewhere around the 1st of November as a result of our son Andy and our daughter-in-law Ashley Height informing that their, Becky and I, a week or so ago, that they were gonna be having a child, or our grandchild, or their first grand, or their first child in November. So, anyway, I wanted to take that moment of grandfatherly privilege.
That's always legitimate, Alderman.
I see Chief McCullough's here tonight, and appreciate, Chief, we know you've been under the weather a little bit, and we appreciate you back, and good seeing you again tonight.
I'd like to see Chief Bradley.
Bradley, and I wanna visit just briefly with Chief Bradley, too. You're recognized, Ms. Whitby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that the North Little Rock Friends of Animals Chili Supper fundraiser had to be rescheduled because of the weather that we had earlier this month. It is this Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Park Hill Christian Church, 4400 JFK. Tickets are only $6, and takeout is available, and I want to encourage everyone to go by and buy some chili to support the animals.
Alder, anybody else?
See Mike Smith for me.
On our agenda items of interest, we also wanna point out that the North Little Rock Women's Club Carousel Ball is April the 5th at our senior center, and that is at 7:00 in the evening, $50 a person. You know, I can give you some phone numbers, but, you know, call City Hall if you're interested or the senior center, and that's a great group, and they've got a terrific event, and we'd encourage you to consider it.
Mayor, Charlie, will you come up just a second? Senior Citizens Commission met today, and Charlie shared a bit of information with us, and I thought it might be interesting for the council to hear this information regarding one-day attendance at the Hayes Center that we hit, was it two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Two weeks ago.
Over 800 people came in one day, and we're shooting for 1,000 in September. We're a little, we go down a little bit in the spring and summer, but over 850 people came one day.
Okay, guys, look at your budget and see how much money you're investing in the center, so, it's a good buy.
It is. We also had 13,200 hours of volunteer service this year, too, for this past year.
Charlie, you continue to do magic there, and we appreciate it, and it's with the volunteers, as well as your very dedicated staff, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Public comment section, the microphone's open.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor, and I'm back again. I don't know where y'all are working on this or not, but it's this problem that I've been talking to you about, it's not getting no better. I don't know how much longer it's gonna go on, but last week, I never even made eye contact with these people. Two of them followed me to the shop, and I wasn't gonna tell y'all what they told me. I hadn't said nothing to them. And I know the city attorney has been writing notes, and as I look at all of y'all sitting up there, two women and the rest of you are men, and I call you gentlemen and ladies, but y'all wouldn't be none of a lady or nothing of a man if you didn't do exactly what I'm trying to do, and try to do something about this. And I wanna say to our two, our lady Alderman, Alderwoman, Alderman, I want y'all, if it's possible, y'all get y'all's heads together, because this is much of y'all's problem than it is mine. And I'd like to invite the rest of you, and you too, Mayor, city attorney, this may be in y'all's next door just any time, and I don't know what has happened to our nuisance and abatement deal. I was told over a year ago that it was almost back in effect, and the last three words of that flag, as we pledge allegiance to the flag night, was justice for all. There's no justice in this, not at all, for nobody. And two weeks ago, we had our crime watch, and Mayor, I know when you was out there, you said you was gonna help them, that was brought up, and they just still waiting on you to, whatever it is that you mentioned, I don't know what it was, but whatever it was, they said that they're ready for it. And it was another phone call to me that I was blaming our police department for some of the stuff that's going on in Rose City. That is not true, and I also told them at the crime watch, and I wanted to say that here tonight, too, that I have had a real close relationship with the North Little Rock Police Department ever since probably the last 15 years. The first five years of the crime watch, I didn't have too good a relationship with nobody because I couldn't get no help, but anytime you start something, you're gonna have problems, I don't care what it is. But since then, our police department, I feel like has done what they could. I know sometimes they've been a little bit late about coming, but I'd rather see them late, it's for something to happen like it happened at Cabot, not wait for a backup. If it had been two there, more likely that would not have happened. And I have a great deal of respect for our North Little Rock Police Department. I may not always agree with everything they do, and they don't always agree with everything I do, but I'll be there with them till the end, and I still want y'all all to get together, see if y'all can't come up with something near next door to me before something happens. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll see y'all in two weeks.
Mr. Taylor, rest assured, folks have been working on it, and if it was as clear as, was it easy to determine an action that could be done, I can assure you it would be done, but that is not as clear as, at least as it's reported to me, and I'll make sure that you get that same report, you know, between now and the end of the week, but rest assured, they have been looking into it and been trying to determine a proper course of action, but have very, are difficult in defining something that they feel can be addressed very easily, or at least very quickly, so.
I'm not accusing you of dragging your feet, I'm just, I'm just asking you to do something before somebody gets hurt, and then somebody says, well, we didn't even know anything was going on.
We, and I just wanted to mention to you, too, that we are doing things, and we're trying to determine if there's anything that we could legitimately have an opportunity, so I didn't wanna leave our silence, or my silence up here, to imply that we're just sitting here waiting for you to come back in two weeks.
Oh, no.
You know, we're not doing that, we're gonna do the best we can, but it's not just easy, there's not an easy course of action in this situation.
And I know the police department can only do what they have something to do something with.
We're doing our best to try to figure out if there's something that we can do.
You can't take six of them and put them in 12 different places at one time. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jim Ard. Mayor, I shared with you what I'd be talking about tonight. Alderman, Alderman Ross, Alderman Gaines, watch the site up on the blog, watch the site, I don't recall, have it written down? Okay, nobody wants to tell you the site?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for it.
Yeah, I need another site.
Block spot, I'm sorry.
Say it again, put your mic on, say it. Put your mic on, say it.
Art, can anything else I can do for you right now? Levy Project Block Spot.
I didn't realize what they put up there when they nicknamed our mayor, nicknamed his secretary, and other things.
Okay, that's a different block spot.
That's the one I'm after.
Okay, I don't know about, that's a different deal.
Well, you respond to it, so I just figured-
No, Art, before you start in again, I didn't respond to it, never been on that blog in my life, never signed on to it, please. I don't know anything about that blog.
I hand you a printout, would you believe me?
Yeah, I'd believe it.
Okay, but anyway, the one I'm talking about, they refer to our mayor- But anyway, the one I'm talking about, they refer to our mayor...
Yes.
With nicknames, they refer to his secretary with nicknames.
They did.
I may not agree with her, and she may, and I hate to do this, Mayor, but I'm gonna be honest, she may flip those cigarette butts out on city streets, we have to call it to your attention, but she's your secretary, she has a name, they need to respond with a correct name. We elected you as mayor, you've done some good things for North Little Rock, you've earned that title as referring to you as mayor, and I can't believe these people will get up there and make some of the comments they do, it's really degrading. On top of that, they like to sign it anonymous. If they care so much about the city, why don't they come down here to the council meeting and get up and complain like I do? Why don't they be willing to let their name be put out and then be ridiculed? I am not happy with how they treated you, Mayor. I may not agree with you, and by the way, for what it's worth, what they're putting up there, I'm sure you'll have an opponent, aren't you?
Mr. War- uh, Mr. Ford, uh, you know, Mr. Ard, uh, I- I appreciate your comments, uh, I don't read those, uh, and, uh, you know, if- if- if someone's inspired by those words, then have at it, I have made no announcement at this point, and, uh, you know, we'll just have to wait and see, but, uh, I, too, agree that if anyone wants to make some comments that they feel in the best interest of this city, then I would encourage them to do so, and even if they're not in the best interest of this city, uh, but if they're not, if they don't choose to put their name behind them, then, you know, I don't choose to, uh, concern myself with them, to be honest with you, so, you know, with that, folks are entitled to, uh, you know, freedom of speech, and with that, I'll ask the council if they'd like to end the speaking tonight by motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, and I certainly don't have any comments on that, but I wanted to introduce myself, my name is Heather Callaway, and I have concerns about our city, our police officers, the future of our city, and that's why you'll see my name on the ballot on May 20th for North Little Rock District Judge, so I just wanted to introduce myself to you and hope that I'll be working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, and, uh, we certainly look forward to working with our judges, and, uh, and, uh, and we appreciate you coming, you're always welcome, Heather. Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, we've got more folks that wanna make some comments. Yes, sir.
How I'm doing today, my name is Christopher Ojuku, and this is Mrs. Brown, my advisor, and I first wanna thank the mayor for supporting the petition for Bearin Cross, because so often we feel like everybody's forgotten about us in the high chairs, but that's obviously not true, because you're supporting us, and I thank you. But we're in the process of getting, uh, a recreation center for Bearin Cross, but we do need the financial support, so that would really be, you know, if y'all would take that into consideration.
Chris is, uh, I'm his mentor, and he's really, um, serious about, um, having something started in that Bearin Cross neighborhood. I'd like to say thanks to, um, the mayor for supporting the sidewalk petition and the beautification of, of the great Bearin Cross neighborhood. Uh, I thank you for meeting with us, taking the time out, meeting with the community advocates for Bearin Cross. You've- you've been there for us, and I know you believe, I know that's your, where you grew up, so I know that it's just takes a matter of time before things come together. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the youth of Bearin Cross, I wanna thank my Alderman Linda, and we will be talking soon. I wanna thank Jack Finnegan and Jack Roberts for, um, inspiring me to, um, speak out and be active in- in the, uh, city council. My name's Michelle Stur Brown, again, I'm from Bearin Cross, have been a resident there for 17 years, and as you can see, I'm not going anywhere. And I thank you for DJ, my- my, uh, newspaper guy who, uh, has done some coverage for me a year ago, almost a year ago today, but we just wanted to, uh, say thanks for, um, supporting us, Mayor.
Well, we're- we appreciate y'all being here, and we look forward to working with you, we're not going anywhere either, and we're gonna make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
For a second?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?